Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, April 24th. It is 7:02 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the following town council members are present in chambers. Council members Tusco, Mauer, Lappelis, Formicella, O'Rourke, and Rooney. The following members are here remotely. Dowlin Wales and Kevin Reed. I do not see Councilmember Martin here as of right now, but I will note her presence for the record if she does call in. All right, item three, public hearing. All right, this evening we have a public hearing regarding the repeal of Chapter 470, Article 5, Abatement for Emergency Medical Services Personnel, and Article 6, Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters, and the replacement by adoption of the new Article 5, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Emergency Medical Services Personnel and Volunteer Fire Departments. The public hearing is officially open. What I will, as a point of organization, I will begin with those members of the public that are here in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate on this item? Please step forward, name an address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. John Howe, Chief of Stevenson Fire, Five Great Quarter Road, Sandy Hook, Connecticut. On behalf of all three fire companies, we really appreciate you looking at the ordinance, increasing it. This is definitely a benefit for our volunteers, our active volunteers, by increasing the tax abatement. So I appreciate you looking at this, and thank you very much for supporting volunteers.
Thank you. All right, is there any other member of the public that's here in Town Council chambers that would like to participate? Please come forward, name an address for the record.
Steve Kirsch, 35 Applegate Lane. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance. However, my comments tonight are solely my own. I do not represent the Board or any of its members. And I am simply like to say I'm in favor of this. What they do for the town is certainly worth it for us. And I think this would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that's here in Town Council chambers that would like to participate during this public hearing? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to turn to those who are here virtually, either by phone or tablet or a computer. Please remember to unmute yourself. So is there any member of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing that is here virtually? Please remember to unmute yourself. Okay, once again, is there any member of the public that is here virtually that would like to participate during this public hearing regarding the tax abatement for emergency medical services and the abatement for volunteer firefighters? Please remember to unmute yourself. Okay, there are none. I'm going to do one more time for Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing? Please step forward, name an address for the record. Hearing none, seeing none, anybody see anybody? I don't, I don't know. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. It is 7:06 PM. All right, item four, Consent Calendar. There's no objection. I'm going to pass Consent Calendar as presented. There ain't no objection. I'm passing Consent Calendar. A, Asset Communication, items A through M being incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. And item six, Public Participation. This is the regular part, public participation. Is there any member of the public that is here in Town Council chambers that would like to participate during public participation? Please step forward, name an address for the record. Seeing none in Town Council chambers, I'm going to go move to those who are here digitally. If there's any member of the public that would like to utilize public participation, please remember to unmute yourself, name an address for the record. Once again, please unmute yourself. For those who are here by phone, or laptop, or tablet, if you'd like to participate during public participation, now is your time to do so. All right, hearing none, seeing none, I am going to close public participation. We have no appointments this evening. Action items, Item A, Town Council Command, Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, Madam Vice Chair.
We've not had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Plan, Zone, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters, Councilmember Rooney.
Oh, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Legislative and Administrative Matters, Councilmember Reed.
Yep, thank you. I just want to go over, we did meet tonight, and we had five items that we spoke about, numbers 52 to 56. We talked about the Performing Artist Engagement Agreement, Tom Weber, State Homeland Security Grant, Region 1, an MOA, Kids on the Moon Rental, Smart Line Race Services Agreement, and Avenue Dog License Module Sales Order, all reached consensus to move to council.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Item D, Strategic Plan Committee, we will have a meeting on Wednesday, the 26th, at 5:30 PM. The specific purpose of that meeting is to come up with suggestions for the Board of Education Facility Studies. The Chairman, the Chairman and Superintendent Schools asked for our input, if there was anything that we should look at. So I would just encourage members, if there's anything you think the Board of Education should look at in their facility studies and their statement of work, please reach out to one of the members. The members are myself, Dowlin Wales, and DeeDee Martin. Okay, thank you. EMS Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's really no update at this point. I actually was just there, attempting to get the washer and the dryer hooked up, but we're still in the holding pattern reconciling that building, but at this point, there's nothing more to add.
Thank you. All right, Item F, Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, well, that's since our last meeting.
Thank you. And Item G, First Selectman's Update. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, update on the budget process. The Board of Finance completed their budget review as per the charter and have adopted a proposed budget. That will now go to referendum on May 2nd. In their review, they did accept certain additional adjustments that I had recommended to the budget. Some were net reductions in expenditures based upon new information that was available since the budget was with council. There were also some increases in projected revenue for state aid as well as investment income. That, along with revisions to the grant list, particularly being able to reduce the contingencies after the Board of Assessment Appeals deliberations, resulted in a projected tax rate increase of 1.87%, which is lower than when you last saw this. The, again, this is an average of less than 1% per year in the past six years. The Board of Finance also made a recommendation, which we would have to certainly discuss further with council as well, to consider utilization of additional fund balance, $1.5 billion to be exact, in the upcoming fiscal years to consider, fiscal year, to consider acceleration of some capital projects without the need for bonding or impacting next year's mill rate. So I think as the, as this current fiscal year rounds up, that'll be something that we'll continue to explore based on where we end the year. And again, just want to reiterate that I'm very appreciative of the time and due diligence of this council and our Board of Finance, and of course, all our Town Hall, Department Heads, and for this council and the Board of Finance, the unanimous bipartisan votes in support of the budget. And certainly hope everyone comes out on May 2nd to vote at the referendum. At Wolf Park, we have a couple events on Sunday, the Sunday, April 30th, at 11:30 AM, we're going to have an Arbor Day celebration with the tree planting with the help of a local Girl Scout troop number 34001. And right after that, at noon, we will be celebrating the full completion of the Wolf Stand Playground. You'll recall that the backorder zip line was, is going to be installed as Councilmember Mauer mentioned at the last meeting. We'll also have the installation of the signage that recognizes the project team and the main sponsors. So I'd love to have as many of you attend who can make that. Once again, the Neighborhood Assistance Act program is starting up for 2023. Again, the state program allows nonprofits and community organizations to submit proposals to the town. The town, upon review and approval, submits those to the state, and approved programs are, then become eligible to receive corporate donations from, that they can solicit and allow those corporate businesses to have a reduction in their state corporate tax liability. I will need all applications from those organizations submitted by June 2nd, 2023, in order to be considered, so we can go through the required statutory process for... You'll recall that those come before you. There will be a public hearing before we adopt, which we must do in June, the final list of recommended programs. And last but not least, a few more business updates. The Duncan, that I know we've been talking about for a while, to be constructed at Village Square, they will be starting in the next couple of weeks with site preparation, so you'll be seeing construction there. California Closets is going to be relocating from Shelton into our industrial park at 164 Enterprise Drive. That's over 10,000 square feet of factory space, almost 7,000 square feet of warehouse space, and over 3,000 feet of office space. And we have received an application for a 173,000-square-foot shopping center at 10 and 36 Main Street, that is the former Vishay property. The proposal includes a grocery store, a restaurant, gas station convenience store, and additional restaurant space. And that is it for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that is it for action items this evening. Unfinished business, I don't believe we have an update on Item A this evening.
Oh, there is no update this evening.
Thank you. On Item B, pavement management update from our consultant.
Yes, so if I may, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to recognize our Public Works Director, Chris Nowacki, who's with us, our Deputy Director, Bill Phillips, who's here as well, and all the hard work that they do. I know they rely heavily on this analysis every four years to make sure that our road plan is well-informed. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Gordon Daring, who is from VHB, and he'll give us his presentation.
You're in control of the...
I have the magic add-on, yes.
Thank you all, and I thank you again for... I did want to start off by saying I apologize for having had to postpone this presentation a couple of times. The first time was out of my control. My wife is out of hospital, doing very well, thank you. The second time was, there were some anomalies that we saw in some of our information, and we wanted to take the time to dig into those and make sure that we were confident of the information we were providing. I will explain that just a little bit more in just a moment. So pavement management, and for any of you who have been on the council for a while, I do apologize if you've seen some of these slides before, but our definition of pavement management is it's a planning exercise that's aimed at your pavement maintenance and rehabilitation program. And basically, what we're trying to help you do is to get the biggest bang for every dollar that you have that you're able to put into your pavement improvements. And it is a planning exercise, so it's at a fairly high level, but it is to be used as a guide for planning your annual road program. The chart that you see at the bottom of this slide shows that there's a couple of points in time during a pavement's life where it's important to kind of know where the pavement is on this white curve, if you will. This slide shows that at a point every year, about 75% of the way through a pavement's life, that pavement condition has dropped to a point where it's probably about then time to do some maintenance work on that pavement section. Maintenance work is very inexpensive compared to more expensive resurfacing or full rehabilitation. So it's kind of like smart business to pay attention to get that preservation work and maintenance work done when you can. Otherwise, as you can see on the slide, you go from spending something like maybe 65 cents per square yard of pavement up to all the way to $23 or $27 per square yard. So it gets very expensive kind of quickly. And we're trying to help you avoid that situation. The process that we go through, we start out by making sure we've got a solid inventory of what roadways you are responsible for maintaining and upgrading. Then we do the condition assessment. And the way we do that assessment is we look at nine different pavement distresses, and they're things that everybody in this room is familiar with. Various types of cracking, potholes in the road, distortions in the road surface, things like that. For each one of those distresses, we look at how extensive the distress is and also how severe it is. So if we're talking about cracking, the severity would basically be estimated by the width of the cracks. And the extent is just simply what percentage of the road segment do we see that particular distress on. We use that information to develop a pavement condition index number, or a PCI. It's on a 0-100 scale, where 100 is a perfect brand-new road. A 0 would be an impassable road. Once we have that information, we work with your public works staff to develop a series of treatment strategies and associated costs. So, and I have a series of five slides that I'll show you to kind of talk through these treatment bands, as we call them. But basically, what we identify is depending on the condition of the road, we identify the level of treatment that's appropriate. Some roads need nothing at all, some roads need full rehabilitation. And like I said, I'll wait till I go through the slides with photos to get into that in more detail. Then knowing what level of treatment, and so, and what associated costs are connected with each road segment that you're responsible for, we're able to test different budget scenarios to see how many dollars we projected the town would need to spend on your road network, on maintaining, rehabilitating your road network over time in order to keep the average condition level, or to improve things some, or, you know, if we don't spend enough, see a degradation of other conditions. The final step, which we're in the process of working with your Public Works Department right now to do, is to use all this information to come up with, in this case, a three-year plan for both pavement maintenance and rehabilitation. Actually, before I get into this, I would like to explain just a little bit of why the two-week delay in the presentation. Shortly before the last meeting was scheduled, we discovered some situations where the pavement condition index that we were reporting now was higher than the pavement index, pavement condition index that we reported back four or five years ago. Very logical situation if there's been work done on the road, either some maintenance or full resurfacing, et cetera, except that we saw some instances where we knew that there hadn't been any work done. So needed to dig into that to, you know, make sure what the situation was. So over the course of the last two weeks, I personally went out and looked at virtually every road segment where that had, where that PCI increase was, had been observed. The vast majority of them, in fact, had had some crack sealing done, some patching done, in some cases, the micro-surfacing treatment that's been done in town, and a few had just plain old been resurfaced, had, you know, had been repaved. But I did run into some where I felt like our engineers that had been in the field perhaps had not fully accounted for all of the distresses, either the severity or the extent of certain distresses in their evaluation. So where I found that, I made an adjustment in the distress info and also therefore in that PCI number. I also found a few situations where I felt like the stresses might have been overstated a little bit. So I adjusted those as well. I mean, I looked at, I have to go to the number, 100 and something approaching 140 seconds of road. I literally, you know, made adjustments in a couple of handfuls of roads. So it wasn't a super prevalent situation, thankfully, but, you know, it was something that needs to be looked at. And after having gone through that myself, I feel confident that the treatment level that we have provided and the information we provided is a very reliable tool for your Public Works Department to use as a planning tool to help plan the improvements. There were a couple of takeaways that I wanted to share. One, just from a personal perspective, is when we're planning these projects, it became clear to me that while we absolutely did do quality checks on the work that had been done, that programming in a little bit more time and probably, you know, obviously doing it earlier is something that we need to do in the future. The other thing that I've mentioned to your Public Works Managers that the town may want to consider is that over the last few years, there are new technologies that have become available to evaluate pavement condition using technology like, I hate to be one saying the word, but artificial intelligence and other tools that do measuring. We have, we don't do that work ourselves, but there are companies out there that do that. And, you know, I would say communities that have gone that way, it's still really important to add in an engineer's knowledge and to layer in on top of that AI-type approach, as well as local knowledge. But that approach, if you have a machine look at a pavement once, twice, 10 times, 100 times, it's going to come up with exactly the same information every time. So just something to think about down the road in terms of continuing the effort to manage our pavement. So to run through these photos, and first of all, these are not Monroe roads. And this one, you know, virtually brand-new road, looks great. It's the road that everybody wants to live on. This, believe it or not, there must be a crack or a tiny pothole someplace or something on that road segment, but the PCI is 99, very, very close to 100, very, almost perfect. This next road is in a treatment band that we would refer to as a routine maintenance band. This is where, as you can see right in the center of the road and also a little bit off to the right, cracks have developed. And even though this road's in pretty darn big shape, it is at a point where some maintenance could be done just to seal those cracks. It's one of the most cost-effective things you can do to prolong the life of your pavement. This next one is in kind of a middle band that we refer to as a pavement maintenance band or maybe a preservation band. You can see that there's more crack. It's relatively light cracking, but it's become quite a bit more brittle. And so on this road here in Monroe, a typical treatment might be what's called a micro-surfacing treatment, where instead of just sealing the cracks, you may seal the cracks, but then also apply a steel over the entire surface, which kind of protects it from further oxidation from the sun and, again, preserves and prolongs the life of that pavement. This next one is in what we refer to as a band where it needs structural improvement, which typically is going to be something like an overlay of the road or perhaps a mill and then overlay of the road, and maybe with some patching going on ahead of time. So as you can see, the cracking's become more and more prevalent. The cracks are sort of starting to heave up just a little bit, and this road starts to feel kind of rough when you drive on it. And then the last one, and this is where you're glad that these aren't really Monroe roads. This road's a bomb. You don't need a pavement engineer to tell you that. All sorts of patching, various, you know, all sorts of distresses, not to mention the sand left over from the windows. When a road gets to this point, it either has to be, you know, it has to be fully rehabilitated, either through a process called reclamation or another treatment that can be used if there's enough pavement there to work with, is cold-in-place recycling. And the cold-in-place recycling is a very cost-effective approach. And there are a number of roads in the town of Monroe that could be good candidates for that type of thing. The next slide here shows the distribution of different condition levels. The poorest roads are on the left, the roads in best condition are on the right. Pretty much follows a bell curve. The overall average, so weighted average by length, is 78, which I'll talk a little bit more about. You know, I would tell you that the, about the midpoint in that chart from there to the left are the roads that are going to need either some full resurfacing or rehabilitation type work. And to the right of that would be the roads that are pretty good candidates for some type of preservation. We have, I have the pleasure of working here in Monroe for quite a number of years. Back in 2010, our estimate of the average PCI townwide was 64. As I just said, today it's 78. I don't know if a 14-point increase seems like a lot to you or not, but I can tell you that, based on my experience, it takes a long-term commitment by a community to make that kind of increase over time. It's not something you can do overnight. It takes a while. And Monroe should be proud of the fact that we have achieved that. The bell curve, black bell curve shown kind of behind things there, is just intended to show you that back in 2015, we did a study where we took information from 36 different communities, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Westchester County, Southern New Hampshire, Love Island, and found that the median or average PCI, average-average PCI of all those communities was 77. So at this point with a 78, Monroe has kind of pushed past that average point and is, you know, just a little above average. So congratulations. Another quick way of looking at conditions, back in 2010, this map, the poorer roads are the ones that are in red and yellow or gold color, which is what you see mostly on that map. And if you fast-forward that to today, you still do see red roads and gold-colored roads, but there's also the blues and green roads that are filled with dirt. So, you know, it's a significant improvement. One thing I can tell you is I've driven through different towns. If you're in a town where the average PCI is 60, you notice it. You go, oof, boy, these roads are pretty tough. And if you drive through a town where the roads are even in the 80s, you go, hmm, ah, these roads are pretty good. And, you know, as the previous chart showed, you know, the average of a 77. And, you know, I guess just to give you a sense of that, and that's me talking, that's my impression from having looked at a lot of roads and so on, but that's a general guide, you know. So Monroe is definitely headed in the right direction. Speaking of that, you know, again, back in 2010, average PCI was 64. It's just been a gradual improvement over time, you know, and that takes a few things, it takes money, you know, it takes dollars to commit to your road maintenance program. It also takes some really good management of those dollars and applying them in an effective manner. So this chart takes those, the mileage data, and has applied the treatments that have been recommended for each road segment to, you know, into those five treatment bands that the pictures depicted. As you can see here, the, you know, with a total backlog of work, like if you were to run out today, money was no object, and you didn't have to worry about interrupting all the traffic in town, and you had $22 million to spend, you could bring all of your roads up to a near-perfect condition. That's in a make-believe world. Of that 22 million, close to, you know, just shy of 17 million is on roads that are in need of either a milling overlay or overlay... need of either a milling overlay or overlay and maybe a little preparation work. So that's where the bulk of the work is going to be in the coming years. I've got that same information from that chart, that table we're at, showing these two charts. The two things I would point out is on the pie chart on the right shows that of the total backlog of work that, call it 21, 22 million, 2% of that is related to routine maintenance work, like for instance, crack sealing. And 10% would be related to preservation work, maybe that like full surface seal I talked about. So with 12% of the dollars that are needed, if you look back over on the left, those two categories of work comprise 40 miles, 40% of the miles. So with 12% of the dollars, you can maintain and preserve 40% of the miles, right? That's a pretty good deal, particularly if you compare it to the fact that the, that milling overlay category that I mentioned comprises 77% of the dollars and, you know, would treat just 32% of the miles. So it's just, it's much more expensive work to do, just like you do hopefully oil changes on your cars and do preventive maintenance on your teeth and all that stuff. Preventive maintenance is always a smart move when looking at things in the long term. Staying on the cost trend, this chart, not ours, comes from somebody kind of tracked various building costs over time. There's been a 20%, since the last time we did a study for the town of Monroe, there's been a 20% cost in road construction materials and equipment and labor. You know, so it's fairly significant. I also, if you look back further, back to 2010 on this chart, there's been about a 50% increase in the cost of doing infrastructure work since that 2010 period. So just that the dollar amounts involved, you know, are going up all the time in the last few years have certainly been a great example of that. The funding levels that we took a look at and analyzed, you know, we took a look at three different five-year plans, one based on spending 1.5 million per year, one based on 2.4, one based on 3.6. I understand is that historically, the average dollars that have been spent each year here have been about 2 million. So the 2.4 is, you know, about that 2 million plus the 20% that just referenced. So what we found was kind of continuing that chart that I showed earlier with the colored lines out to the right, you can see that the red line, which represents the predicted results with spending about 2.4 million, you know, would continue that kind of gradual increase that the town has experienced to date. And logically, more money would, you know, allow you to increase conditions a little more, and the 1.5 million would suggest that, you know, you might be more like kind of keeping level or maybe even dropping off just a touch. So last slide I'll leave you with, you know, obviously it's key to provide enough funding to achieve whatever pavement condition goals the town chooses to choose for. And hopefully this information is a help to destimize what that would be. One practice that your public works department has had is that prior to doing pavement improvements, they've been going out using, many cases, in many cases using town forces, to do drainage improvements ahead of pavement improvement. That's just smart public works management, smart engineering, not doing the, doing necessary drainage improvements prior to doing pavement improvement is kind of just throwing good money after bad because, you know, water under the road will kill the road every time. So, you know, encourage the town to continue that practice. Also to continue to perform subsurface sampling of the pavement materials themselves prior to doing certain treatments. I mentioned the cold in place work, the vendors, the contractors that do that kind of work will typically come out and take some samples through the road bed to find out for sure that there's enough pavement there for them to recycle in place. Likewise, prior to doing milling and then overlaying, you need to know how much pavement exists. I, in my drives around town, I saw instances where there was not much pavement on those roads. You know, Monroe has an awful lot of subdivision roads that were built, I'm going to guess, back in the early 2000s, maybe a little bit earlier than that. And, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what the specifications were, how tightly the contractors were held, but I do think that, and the next bullet kind of gets at this, I do think that the number of subdivision roads in town are going to take some focus in terms of keeping those pavements up into good shape. There's a number of them right now that are in, my opinion, are in a condition where they could be preserved with some crack sealing, which the town has done a lot of, or that micro-surfacing, full surface seal that we talked about. But there are also, you know, as the financial analysis there, something like 17 million out of the 22 going to milling overlay work, a lot of that work is in some of those subdivisions that were done about 20 years ago. There's a general rule of thumb that a pavement will last 20 years. Well, 2023, 20, you know, so I think that a lot of those roads are going to be getting to that point, so there will be continued attention needed there right now. And as I mentioned, just the last step that we're close to completing is developing a three-year plan for specific roads for rehabilitation and this, for that type of thing. So that's work in progress right now. Did that entertain any questions that anyone may have?
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Mau?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. First one is, could you just give us a little bit of detail on the actual process of what goes into evaluating a road and then validating that data?
Yep. So it's a visual inspection, you know, it's neither, we don't use any equipment, so to speak. So, I mean, I don't feel too deep, but typically what we'll do is we'll drive through the road to get a general sense of what's going on. In some cases, if it's a road that's near new and there's very little distress that we see, that can almost be enough. And we'll go, okay, saw a little bit of cracking, note that, and, you know, and kind of move on. In some cases where a road is in really horrible shape and you have one drive through, usually you want to come back and make sure that you've picked up each of the distresses that are there. The way the rating system works is that it's most heavily weighted by the most prevalent distress that we see. Let me use alligator cracking as an example, because there's a fair amount of that in town. So, you know, that would be the most prevalent distress and that will take the PCI, say, from 100 down to, depending on how severe it is and how extensive it is, down to 70 or even 60, you know, just boom, you're right there. And then, and then the rating system takes into account a percentage of the remaining distresses. I guess I should explain that depending on the severity and the extent of each distress, there's what we call a deduct value assigned. So like heavy alligator cracking, heavy extensive alligator cracking, right? I believe the deduct value is 40 points, okay? And if it's less severe, less extensive, the deduct values are less. So it combines all that information for the nine different distresses that we look at, taking deduct points away from 100, and that's how the rating happens. In some cases where there's a distress that is of varying severity, like we've got, I'll keep, I'll stick with the alligator cracking example. We've got some alligator cracking that's heavy, and we've got some alligator cracking that's of medium severity and some alligator cracking that's light. Now, usually you got to get out of the vehicle, right? And what we'll sometimes do is kind of mark off a 100-foot, 200-foot segment of, you know, sample, if you will, of the road and start kind of measuring the distresses and measuring it versus, you know, the area of that sample. Because in those situations where you have distresses of varying severity level, you have to figure out, well, hmm, is this medium? Is this light? Is this heavy? So it, you know, it's not an exact science. We don't, like I said, we don't measure anything with a, with a micrometer, but we do try to, you know, be as consistent as we can be in doing that evaluation. Not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, that was good. In the 2018, 19 reports, the backlog amount was about 17.8 million. Now it's at the 21.7 million, which is about that 20%, which means monetarily speaking, we didn't decrease that backlog at all because it's exactly that 20% that we're talking about. What can we do to bring that, bring that number down, even if it goes from 21 million to 22 million next time, but is lower than the inflation rate? What can we do to make that number catch up to the increase of the index? So while we increased in points, we still didn't really clear any backlog.
Yeah. So few things, you know, one is, you know, our analysis said, well, it's not 2 million, now it's 2.4. So, you know, funding level to keep up with inflation. You know, I know, I had a councilperson from Bridgeport today telling me, this makes no sense, you're telling me to do preservation work on this road, but this road next door is in much worse condition, why wouldn't I do it? And I had to try to explain the financial wisdom of doing preservation work. So I would say that where there are opportunities to do, you know, continue doing the crack sealing, because there has been a lot of cracks nearly done, and I honestly, it's doing a good job of kind of holding a lot of roads together. But do the preservation work, whether it's crack sealing or the micro-surface treatment, where it's appropriate. You know, don't try to use those treatments on a road that really needs something more significant, but where it's appropriate, you know, do that. And then the other, very honestly, is the, you know, for those projects that are more substantial resurfacing type projects, doing the drainage work with, if as possible, town forces or with an inexpensive option, because that work will, in some cases, that can double the cost of a project, you know? It's a, there's a lot of drainage improvements to be done, you know, that can be just as much as doing the pavement. So if, so continue to try to find cost-effective ways of doing the drainage improvements in ahead of the pavement improvement will be smarter. And I guess I would say with regard to that, that that really provides long-term benefit, you know, because if you do the drainage improvements and then pave, the pavement's going to last longer and pavement will have to be resurfaced again somewhere down the road in the future, but that's all that will need at that point. You know, the drainage work doesn't die.
And that actually, I think, kind of answers my next question, that these numbers are not inclusive of any drainage work or anything like that. This is purely estimates of doing the improvements needed on the pavement, on the road surface.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we do have some contingencies and, you know, I mean, there's some extra, you know, I think it was 20% or something like that that we had, just to be a little bit conservative, but, right, this is not including full drainage system replacement.
And then my final question is just on the three different scenario chart that you gave us. It shows with the 1.5 increase and then starts to go down, 2.4 increase and then plateaus after only two years, and then 3.6, a continuous increase, including a fairly decent jump on the first year. But I also noticed that the 1.5, 2.4 estimate for the one year is at about the same. If, would we be beneficial front-loading and then front-loading like a 3.6 million and then decreasing gradually if we needed to? Or are we better off doing something like the 1.5 million year one because that's going to give us a jump and then upping to 2.4 and then 2.6 and then?
The reason you see that bump in the first year is the software that we use. When we're doing these projections, we just let it spend the dollars however it can find the best way to spend the dollars to get the biggest increase of PCI possible. What it does is in the first year, it does all the low-cost routine and preservation work. So, and very honestly, I don't know if I've ever seen a town actually do that. I don't really know how, like, it's a little bit theoretical in the way that I've never found a great way, other than just faking it and just drawing the line. That's why that bump is there, you know? So it's taken like most or all of the budget and doing all of that preservation work and getting a bump in PCI, but then depending on which scenario you're in, then it either levels off or drops off. I mean, I've seen plenty of communities decide to bond, you know, for improvements. I mean, the town of Enfield is the most traumatic example I've ever seen in my life, fairly recently, city of Torrington, you know, I mean, that is something that you can consider. Just, let me use Enfield as an example. When Enfield decided to go on this aggressive bond program, they also hired an individual, hired an engineer, where his only job was to manage the program that they had going on. And they also hired five consultants to actually do some design work and investigation and so on. So, I mean, it was, it was a big program, you know, it wasn't, so you have to be ready for that as well.
But are we better, are we better off if we were going to make not an even installment every year and we were going to vary it? Are we better off front-loading that heavier year or building up to the heavier year?
Assuming that it's manageable by your public work staff, I would say, I'm never a fan, I've never been a fan of like you losing ground by not spending enough, you know? Because if you do that, you're kind of knowingly not doing as much work as maybe you think you ought to, and at the same time, there's, you know, all the other roads are still deteriorating. So I guess my answer would be, provided that your public work staff can, could handle that and the traffic in town, sometimes that's a concern. But if all those other things can be managed, then probably getting ahead of the game is better than letting the game get ahead of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick thing, Chairman. So my question to you is in regards to pavement, other than mother nature and what we know of travel and things of that nature, do you see any difference in pavement quality these days? I don't know how many years you've been in it, but do you see that the current pavement seems to be deteriorating faster than pavement in the past?
I would honestly say that back around 2005, there was a new, the state adopted, and you may have heard the term, superpave. And it was, superpave is not a new kind of material, but it's a new way of specifying the materials that you want in a pavement. And state of Connecticut adopted all of that in the early 2000s. And right about 2005, we saw a pavement that was deteriorating, you know, surprisingly quickly. I think, my team thinks that it was due to the fact that the state hadn't fully gotten hold of how to use this new. that the state hadn't fully gotten hold of how to use this new mixture, you know? So the asphalt, and the real detail is the asphalt plants were putting too much sand in, in the mixture, which requires more asphalt, but they weren't putting more asphalt because the specification didn't tell them they had to. But, I don't know, more, more recently, I mean, you know, I, I think the state's got a handle on that. And, you know, if the contractor is, if contractor's given a specification and they're following it, I, I've seen some.
Yeah, the question, the question, because you seem to be, well, your plan is reactionary, right? As the, the streets deteriorate. Is there anything that we could do proactively? And maybe this isn't your wheelhouse, or maybe it's inappropriate to ask you, but I just want to ask if there's anything, any material, any specific material when we move forward that we should look into that maybe lasts longer? And the other thing I have a question to you about is the materials that are used on the roads to keep them dry, to keep them without ice and things of that nature. And that might be a better question for Chris Nowacki, but I know we have gone through a significant amount of material changes, right? Last decade, you know, you see it before the snowstorms. They stripe the road so the snow doesn't stick. Does that affect the pavement long-term? I don't see that we do a lot of that, Monroe. I don't know exactly what you do there. But I know cars were not rusting years ago, and now they're all starting to rust again. I would imagine if they're rusting vehicles, they're also hurting the roads. So is there, is there a maintenance program that could delay some of this rotting or some of this alligator cracking and things of that nature? Is there, I know your, your action here is reactive, but is there proactive things that we can?
Absolutely, there's proactive things. So first, let me get the, the best end in your community, you know, this bill. They, they have more.
No, I'm not trying to dig deep. It's just a cursory question that I've got on my mind.
So the, the magnesium that has been used for snow removal or snow prevention almost, I think that does more damage like on a concrete bridge deck or a concrete road, which there is very few in Connecticut anymore, and rivers and streams. I think, I think those things get more impact from that material than the asphalt pavement does. But to answer your first question, is there something we can do proactively? I, I, I kind of referenced it before. You know, contractors follow the specification, you know? I, I'll give you, for instance, one, one, and I know, Chris, I'm not going to make work for you here, but when we help communities write pavement specifications rather than just use the state spec, we'll write it in such a way that requires the contractor. Actually, the state spec requires this too, but it's rarely enforced at the municipal level. Requires the contractor to bring a quality control person, testing person.
Testing.
Yeah.
As if you would use concrete under building.
Like that, yeah. But, you know, I, I mean, it's, it just seems logical to me. Like, if you buy a car from Toyota, you're making an assumption that Toyota has tested the materials that they use for the car, or they've got a certification that needs certain specifications and so on. You know, not the contractors trying to do a bad job. I don't really think they are. But holding them to what the specification says. And particularly like for pavement, not for an asphalt pavement, density. You know, did they get density? That's the number one thing that would provide you a longer-lasting pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, on the pavement funding scenario analysis, the final figures that you get is based upon some type of equation that you use? Is that right? Where you have the computer program put in whatever?
Yeah, I think I explained it pretty quick. We got a list of 552 road segments, right? And we've only got $2.4 million to spend. It's not, we know we need 21, 22 million to do everything that's needed. So we use a prioritization value that's mostly based on how many people we, we think are using the road, the average daily traffic level. It also has to do with the cost and so on. But we, we prioritize the roads. And say, okay, so we've got $2 million. Let's do the top $2 million worth of priority work. Okay, we only got that far down. So all the rest of the roads, we didn't get to, but if we're going to do this five-year analysis, the, the roads that we were able to get to, the software says, okay, improve their PCI up to 100, but all these others degrade their PCI by two to four points, depending on where they are on that curve, right? And so, and drop it down. So what the software does, it does a simulation, if you will, of improving some of the roads, letting the other roads degrade another year, going to the next year, prioritizing the next year. Do those roads and improve those, the roads that you have enough money to do. Let the remainder of the roads degrade another few points. So the, the software just kind of, that's the analysis.
Okay. But, but the way it plots the points, though, is, is it, does it end up with that final estimation of, we're at 78 now, and by 2028, you have 85, 81, and 77? So does it come out with that final number first? Or is it doing that process each time and then going up that level? Because earlier you said that the way you explain the green segment, which is $3.6 million a year, is it front-loads? Or theoretically, front-loads a lot of work there, right? So my, my question is, are these specific plot points going to be the actual result? Or if you take the period of time, that's where we'll end up, no matter whether it's, you know, goes straight up like it does in that first year or not?
It, it's probably more accurate to think about it as over the course of the five.
So over the five years, if we do 3.6, 2.4, 1.5, that's where we should be? That's our expected PSI or whatever it's called?
Yeah, because, because very honestly, like I was trying to say before, the, you know, the way, way the software prioritizes and says, here, I'm going to do this top 3.6 million. Well, what it's picking is all of the, meaning all the cracked ceiling work and preservation work and so on, because that's what gets high priority, because it is a cost-effective way of spending dollars. But the reality is, I can't say that I've ever seen the community actually be able to follow that approach. You know, so, so I, I think it's better to think about it more as, I'm starting here, and at this level, we get approximately here.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the, the drainage component of the pavement management, is that separate outside of the costs that you've outlined here? Or, or is that included?
I, I would say that doing major drainage work is outside of the costs that we've identified. If it's, if it's, we've got a couple of catch basins and a little bit of pipes that we need to get in there, it, it's probably included. But, but major drainage work, and, and again, you know, my understanding is that the Public Works Department, either with town forces or sometimes with contracting rule, contractor, et cetera, is, is doing, you know, kind of replacing all of the, you know, the underground drainage structure or installing it for the first time prior to the pavement. So that, that's where the major work is, is outside.
So the, from the 2018, which was raised here a few moments ago to, to now, would you say that there's a percentage of increase with regards to what major drainage work has had to have happened since 2018?
Or? Yeah, I would have to refer to these gentlemen to know. I, I'm, I'm not sure if I know how much, is that what you're asking? How, how much drainage work has been done?
Well, I guess I'm trying to determine here, looking at the graph and the timelines that have been pointed out here earlier, if, and move some of the pavement, physical pavement condition has the major drainage work been supplementing that in advance of that future pavement repair or replacement?
I think the answer is yes. That, that work has been, been done. Either, again, by town forces or by contractor, by the local contractor that does, you know, drainage work involved.
So looking at the graph here from, you know, eyeballing it as best I can, because it's part 28, exactly, from 2018 to, to now, it looks like maybe pavement condition, as outlined in your presentation, was, is now on an upward trajectory, of course, reaching an apex just before 2023, where it's starting to, you know, come down a little bit off of the apex here. So I guess I'm just trying to put into my head here if, in fact, the drainage, the pre-work for the drainage before the pavement is, is partly to reflect that little bit of the dip off of the apex. To me, it looks like we're still a little bit higher condition at 78 than say we would have been. You know, they're close than say we were talking about 2018.
Yeah, I'm, I think I know which chart you're looking at. I mean.
This one.
Oh, okay. No, I'm.
Well, if you're walking back to 2018, you know, you might, you know, realistically derive from that, that graph that you were at or about 78, maybe a little less, depending on how far you wanted to walk back, depending on that presentation of, of that picture. So I guess I'm just trying to determine in my head here if the drainage work that has to go on first is, you know, partly to explain the dip.
Okay, I, I made a confused thing. So the black bell curve line?
Yeah.
Is a representation of a study that we did involving 36 different communities in, call it southern New England, New York State.
Okay.
It, that's not a PCI line.
Gotcha.
It's, it's, it's like, you know, there were, there were, you know, it's kind of just a statistical line. I, I, an easier or maybe a more clearer way that I could have done this was just simply to take the line off of there and just simply provide the words that I provided that said, eight years ago, we did a study where we found that the average, average PCI in 36 communities was a 77. In other words, and the reason we did that was somebody asked us, how do we compare to our neighbors? So really, the only thing, the main message of trying to get across with this slide was that today, different than 13 years ago, today Monroe is slightly above average in comparison to all the other communities that we included in, in that.
All right, so if we go back, so if we go to the Monroe historical graph, which correlates to what we're all talking about here. 2018, I guess it's at 75, and now we're looking at 78. So we're still on an upward trajectory. Albeit slight, but still.
Yep.
And that's, and that's under the premise that there's probably a lot of catch-up work with regards to the drainage that needs to be initiated before more hardcore pavement processes can be actuated.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for unfinished business this evening. We are moving on to new business. Item A, can I have a motion to accept the following donations, which individually exceed $1,500? For the Parks and Recreation Department, $3,000 from Newtown Savings Bank, $3,000 from Mice Mile Orthodontics, Orthodontics, and $1,500 from Precast Concrete Products.
I move.
Motion by Vice Chair LaBella, second by Mr. Maurer, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to extend our thanks to these three local businesses, all of which are generously sponsoring Parks and Rec summer programming, such as our summer concert series. And their support is greatly appreciated so we can continue to provide the great, the great entertainment that Missy provides to our community every year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 820. Item B, Resolution 23-054, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-054, resolved. That Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the rental agreement and any associated documents binding between Kids on the Moon for the bicentennial event.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, sir. Second. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A simple agreement for the rental of activities for children during the Family Picnic Day component of the bicentennial celebration, which our Bi-Centennial Committee has recommended. We'd certainly like to move forward to have this as a component of the Family Picnic Day. You've got the letter of opinion from the Town Attorney in this regard to ask that we move this forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-054, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 820. Resolution 23-055, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-055, resolved. That Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the contract and any associated documents binding between Startline Race Services LLC for the bicentennial Mile Down the Pike Race.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, sir. Second?
Second.
Mr. First Electman.
Thank you. Again, the Bi-Centennial Committee, another event that they are planning as part of their celebration is a short, they're calling Mile Down the Pike Road Race during, on Sunday, prior to our parade. This is simple contract for the timing and associated services for a vendor to come and do that for us. And again, you have the first, sorry, you have the Town Attorney's letter in this regard to this contract as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-055, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 820. Item D, Resolution 23-056, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-056, resolved. That the Ken, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute, accept, and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the sales order terms and conditions and any associated documents binding between Avenue Enterprise Solutions LLC for the dog license application module.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, sir. Second?
Second.
Mr. First Electman.
Thank you. As I think everyone knows, the Town Clerk is responsible for processing dog licenses as per state statute. She's advised me that the software that has been utilized is end-of-life, outdated, not supported, and has identified a module that is provided by Avenue Enterprise Solutions. You're probably familiar with them. This vendor is utilized for many other software solutions in the Town Clerk's office. We have a master agreement with them in place already. They have a dog license module at a reasonable price, which the Town Clerk would like to procure. Avenue has a process where they provide a separate contract every time we add a service. That is what is before you this evening. It's been reviewed by the Town Attorney, and it asks that we move this forward so she can be ready for dog licensing month, which is in June.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-056, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 820. And finally, Resolution 23-057, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-057, resolved. That Chapter 470, Article 5, abatement for emergency medical services personnel, and Article 6, abatement for volunteer firefighters, are hereby repealed and be it further resolved that Chapter 470, Article 5, is hereby replaced by adoption of new Article 5. Tax abatement for volunteer emergency medical services personnel and volunteer firefighters as presented and that its full text be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, sir. Second? Second by Ms. Monroe. Mr. First Electman. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've obviously discussed this at prior meetings before, when it was before council and before several committees. I won't go through all of those details, but would ask that, you know, my prior comments be considered. Just to highlight, these changes consolidate the current individual sections into one single section covering both EMS and firefighters or volunteer EMS and firefighters. It increases the abatement schedule beyond five years and allows up to the new statutory limit of $2,000. Remises the veteran life status to veteran and retired veteran and increases those benefits to $250 and $500 respectfully. It memorializes our current application practice. It allows for future changes in the active status to be done by a simple resolution of Town Council after a required opportunity for input from the EMS Commission or the three fire chiefs as appropriate and does remove, it creates, I'm sorry, a Connecticut residency requirement for the abatements so that we alleviate some of the logistical challenges we've been having with out-of-state abatements. So with that, I know it's been reviewed by all the stakeholders, various committees. You've had your requisite public hearing, you've got the Town Attorney's opinion on this matter from a prior meeting. I believe that this is ripe for your final adoption. I will say, without hesitation, that upon the council's adoption, I will be proud to sign this into a new local ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. I will note that this change went through both Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Committee and the Legislative and Administrative Members Committee. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a very big thank you to all of you who are here today, as well as all of your fellow volunteers, for all of your service and hard work. This is certainly something that I'm happy we are able to do for all of you and it's nowhere near what you do for all of us in this community. So thank you all very much and I very heartily support this.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Councilmember. Just to hang on the coattails of what Jason said, thank you very much for all that you do. Those of you who know me, I come from a firefighter and a police background, so I know what it is and it's the least we could do from council. Say thank you for what you do, so thank you.
I could just say, last week, our ADT went crazy. Within five minutes, there was police, fire people at the house. It was very embarrassing, only because absolutely nothing was wrong, except the ADT had done something. So, you know, I can personally say thank you very much. Fire, ambulance, or whatever, pull up the driveway and, you know, God bless you guys.
Admiral, and the timing of this abatement, couldn't be any more poignant with the injury that one of our firefighters faced recently. Hopefully, he's doing better and doesn't suffer too long of a disability.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Sure.
I will say thank you as well, and thank you, Ken, for all your work. We went through all of this language in a private meeting and for putting this down and for the volunteers.
Appreciate that, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. All right, and other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-057, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 820. All right, we have, that is it for new business. We do have second public participation this evening for matters of unfinished business and unfinished new business, of which we have two items, St. Jude Property and Community Center project and pavement management update. Any takers? Is there anyone here digitally that would like to participate on either of these? Hearing none, I'm going to close second public participation. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:16 PM. Thank you very much.